Planning Board Meeting for the City of New Brunswick for January eighth, two thousand and eighteen. This is our annual reorganization meeting. And the chairman, normal procedure is for the first few bits of activity for the reorganization meeting, Assistant Secretary will act as temporary chairman until we get through the nomination of a new chairperson, and then a new chairperson can take over. If you're okay with that, I'll proceed. You have a vote.
Pierre Checo.
Here.
Dale Vickers.
Here.
Clary Barber.
Here.
Chris Stellatella. John Petrellino. Manny Castaneda.
Here.
Bob Cardika.
Here.
Suzanne Ludwig. David Henry. Jeff Crum.
Here.
Public announcement.
Please be advised of notice requirements, the Open Public Meetings Act has been applied with satisfied the annual notice will be sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the planning board of the city of New Brunswick, provided by the city clerk, and placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the body of City Hall, seventy-eight Byer Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, has been transmitted to official newspapers of the city of New Brunswick, namely the home news, Tribune, and Star Ledger. So we comply.
Liberty, this is the life of United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, be invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business for the board is tenured reorganization, and the first order in reorganization is the nomination of a chairperson, and I'll open the floor to nominations for chair. Mr. Crum is our current chair, I know he's expressed an interest in continuing that job.
I'm going to give to Crum.
We have a second.
A second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Congrats. Congratulations. Turn the gavel back to him, Mr. Crum.
Thank you. Moving on to nomination for vice chair.
Current vice chair is Dave Kretsenry, he's not able to be here tonight, but he did express that he was interested in continuing.
I make a motion to accept David as a vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appointment of secretary.
Chairman, that's been me for the last fifteen years or so, and we want to do it again for another year, if you're okay with that.
I'll nominate you.
I'll say a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good, thank you. Appointment of a board attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Itol has been our board attorney for the last several years, and obviously he's here at times, we like to continue in that capacity as, although we don't do the RFP for this position, but still needs to be nominated by the board. It's your choice as to who your attorney is, so we go through the same process.
I'll nominate and start talking.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Conflict board attorney?
Chairman, if you were also appoint a conflict board attorney, in case Mr. Itol has a conflict, then we have someone else to turn to who can represent the board. We did a RFP for this, and the only respondent to this was Carl Kim of McMinniman Scotland. So that would be our recommendation as to who should be conflict attorney. He's acted as conflict attorney for the past year, but we didn't have need for him in this past year. Send him a motion and a second on that.
I make a motion to accept the...
Yeah, Carl Kim from McMinniman Scotland.
Yes.
I'll say it.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's the board planner?
Did a RFP on this to select a board planner and Big Down Associates, who's been on our board planner for the last thirteen years now. They've only responded this year, and we recommend that we continue using Hank and Topps to do that, so we have a motion and a second.
Motion? Big Down Planner?
I'll say it.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. What's the engineer?
We did an RFP for this, doing a little bit different this year, we wanted to take some of the workload off of the city engineering department, it would be better to go out and get a consulting engineer essentially to do this, and put out an RFP for this. We had two respondents for this, one was DNR Engineering, Charlie Carley, who's been acting as the board's conflict attorney for the last few years, and he's obviously seen here a lot in that capacity. And CMB also put in an application, compared the two, and felt that DNR's application proposal was superior in terms of cost and experience and so forth, so we're recommending that we go with DNR Engineering.
I make a motion to accept the DNR Engineering for the appointment.
I'll say it.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appointment of hydraulic modeling water systems capacity analysis.
Every year I have to give an explanation for this one, but the city's general engineering contract, they have contracted with Mark McDonald, a consulting engineering firm, that has prepared a computer program to model flows in the city's water system. When we have large projects, the engineering department likes to use this to determine water capacity and so forth of the system compared to what the project's going to be bringing on to the system. In order to be able to charge those costs for using that to the applications, which is the appropriate way to do it, the board has to nominate them to do this service, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to charge it to the SRO, we'd get charged against the regular city accounts. So we cheer reaction to do this, and on the next one for the traffic systems analyst engineer, same logic applies to that, so we're going to charge it to the applicant's SRO.
Motion?
Yes.
All motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And to the traffic systems.
Same scenario, just when the engineering department needs additional traffic engineering assistance in doing that analysis, so we have this.
Seeing?
Yeah.
Mark McDonald.
Yeah, Mark McDonald.
I make a motion to accept Mark McDonald.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The meeting schedule, which is up here.
Yeah, it's attached to the board's package, basically keeping the same regular meeting schedule, I guess there were four meeting dates next month, where there were some holiday or other types of conflicts, where the meeting would get shifted to either the first Monday or the third Monday, but they're listed on the schedule, so like next, in February and June, the first Monday, and then when we get September through November, goes to the third Monday, goes away the holidays, fall, and so forth. So we just need a motion, if that's okay with the board, to keep the same general meeting schedule, we did have a motion and a second to approve that schedule, and this carries through next January.
I make a motion to accept the schedule for twenty eighteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, you were designating minor site plan committee.
Chairman, this is your appointments, and this is to have representatives of the board on the TAC for the Minor Site Plan Committee. The TAC is normally designated as the committee to do that, and Mr. Stellatella has also been for the last couple of years as a board representative on that, so if you want to appoint him, that would be great. And same thing with designation for the Minor Site Plan Committee, that has three members, subdivision committee currently serving that, have been Councilwoman Cora Ludwig, Mr. Stellatella, and his barber, and if they won't do it again, I suggest keeping them in those positions, if it's okay with you.
Okay, great, accepted. All right. Do these issues change? Good. Thank you. Moving on to the minutes of the board's December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen meeting.
Chairman, members received composite minutes in your packets, and if you've got any changes or additions, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
A second on that?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are good.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to new business, tonight we have our first applicant, and it's Jersey Avenue Storage LP, PB two thousand and seventeen dash oh nine, Site Plan and Variance Application for the Operation of a Self-Storage Facility, to be located at one zero zero seven and one zero one three Jersey Avenue, Lot five ninety-seven, Lot one four three two, Zuma District, I.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members, for the record, Joseph Papparo from the law firm, Corzio Braumberg and Newman, on behalf of the applicant owner, Jersey Avenue Storage LP. What I'd like to do this evening is give a brief overview of the project before I call our witnesses this evening. This is a request for Site Plan and Variance Approval, so the property is located at one thousand seven, ten thirteen Jersey Avenue, it's at the corner of Jersey Avenue and Howard Lane. The proposal is to convert a warehouse into a self-storage facility. The existing building will be reutilized, two stories will be added to the self-storage facility, improvements to the site, complete improvements, both to things from drainage, stormwater management, as well as lighting, landscaping. The skin of the building obviously will be aesthetically improved with the renovations and construction. The site's located in your I-two-E zone, which permits the self-storage uses. We do need some variances and some design waivers, which you'll hear more about this evening, and they've been laid out by our professionals in their review letters, and we are prepared this evening to go through those review letters and address any open items. For witnesses this evening, I would like to begin the presentation with our civil engineer, James Kinosiyan, who will discuss the improvements to this property, then move into the architecture. As I said, the building will be completely renovated to make way for the self-storage use, there'll be Mark Sullivan will come forward as the architect and discuss the plans that you have before you. We would then move into the operations, I know there would be some questions regarding the actual self-storage use, the number of employees and such, Morgan Boland from the applicant will come forward to talk about operations, and then finally we will call Charles Olivo, who is the traffic engineer and planner, who will discuss the traffic report that was prepared for this application, as well as address the variances and design waivers that we're requesting. If there's no preliminary questions, I would like to first call James Kinosiyan.
Mr. Chairman, as the first witness is coming up, if you can inquire as to whether any members believe they have a conflict appearing in this application.
Sure. So is there anyone who feels they have a conflict?
Just a point, all us professionals up here should be sworn in again for the...
We should.
Maybe that Mark, you did look into it.
Again.
Professionals, if you could raise your right hand.
Stand?
You don't need to stand. I repeat your name.
Richard Sol.
I solemnly swear that I shall perform the duties of...
I solemnly swear that I shall perform the duties of...
Whatever the duties are.
Your...
Planning staff.
The best of my abilities, Sol, we got.
The best of my abilities, Sol, we got. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our first witness is James Kinosiyan.
If you raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name for me, please.
Certainly, James Kinosiyan, K-I-N-O-S-I-A-N.
And you swear up to it in this matter?
Aye.
Mr. Kinosiyan, for the benefit of the board, your people, can you explain your company affiliation, your education, and the licenses you hold, sir?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone, once again, my name is James Kinosiyan, with Stonefield Engineering and Design, located at ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I received my Bachelor of Science here at Rutgers University, and I'm a licensed, professionally licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. Having worked with Stonefield Engineering for over seven years, I've been provided many opportunities to provide expert testimony before various planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as many other states throughout the Northeast.
And Mr. Kinosiyan, all of your licenses are currently in good standing?
That is correct.
I would offer Mr. Kinosiyan as an expert in the field of civil engineering. Thank you. Mr. Kinosiyan, I provided a brief overview of this application, the site plan request and the variance relief, you're prepared this evening to provide testimony regarding the improvements that are proposed as part of each repurposing of the warehouse facility, correct?
That is right.
And I believe you have exhibits, if you could, for the benefit of the board and public, before you discuss the exhibit, if you could mark it with today's date?
Certainly.
And just provide an overview of what the exhibit represents, and if you're going to refer to your plan set that the board has, just please refer by sheet number, so that the board can follow up.
Great. We'll start by just marking the two primary exhibits for the presentation, the first prepared by our office is the aerial exhibit dated one five twenty eighteen, I'll mark this exhibit A.
A one?
A one.
And if you could just turn that a little bit, so the audience can see it a little bit better, but if we're seeing it's like about a five degree angle, hit it right, that's good.
Is that good? And then the second that we'll mark in advance of discussing is, this is basically a colorized version of the sheet C for the site plan within your package, all dimensions, layouts, notes, details are all identical, we've essentially just colorized it for visual presentation, we can mark this A two.
Mr. Kinosiyan, the slight question is located at the intersection of Jersey Avenue and Howard Lane, correct?
That is correct.
And just for a bit of introduction, can you explain the orientation of the site, the building that's existing on the property, access, and the legal proposal involved?
Certainly. So as Mr. Papparo mentioned, the intention of this application is really to revitalize the existing deteriorated warehouse facility by rehabilitating the building, reconstructing the existing site features which are in disrepair, and really creating a prominent property within the general industrial entertainment zone. The existing site is surrounded primarily by similar warehouse and storage facilities, because most of the areas in the surrounding development are industrial, are within different industrial districts, with the exception, of course, of the newly constructed Quick Check across Howard Lane. The property is located at the signalized intersection of Howard Lane and Jersey Avenue, and existing access to the site is provided via one full movement driveway along Howard Lane, which is under county jurisdiction, and two full movement driveways along Jersey Avenue, which is under state jurisdiction, as it's also referred to as State Route ninety-one. It's also important to note that there's an existing cross-access driveway to the property immediately adjacent to the west, which is Lot twelve point oh one. This is in the vicinity of the Howard Lane driveway, and this permits vehicles to travel onto the subject property in order to make a left in the northwesterly direction and travel onto Lot twelve point oh one, essentially sharing that Howard Lane driveway that currently exists. Parking is provided rather sporadically throughout the existing facility with a series of concrete, asphalt, and gravel parking lots, and there's a good portion of the land closest to the intersection that you see is actually outside of the subject premises. This is under DOT jurisdiction, it's a very densely planted wooded area, and speaking of the signalized intersections, it's also important to note that this intersection is raised approximately ten to fourteen feet higher than the subject property, so essentially from a topography perspective, this intersection is higher, and the slopes would go down in a northerly direction from the southern tip to the northern tip as we get closer to the existing building. Really what this speaks to is the existing drainage patterns, not only for our property, but for the surrounding area, as for the most part, most of these drainage areas all eventually discharge into what's called the mild run brook, which is, it's about, you know, the main presence of it is about a quarter mile in the northeastern direction. It was, you know, many years ago, was an existing brook that ran through the area and over time was replaced with different underground infrastructure to allow the surrounding properties to be developed. It's also important to note that the runoff from the existing intersection is collected by two inlets that are located within the state and county roads. Those inlets collect the rainwater and pipe it in a diagonal direction, actually through the subject property, and eventually wrapping it around the existing building before the underground pipe leaves the subject property and crosses over to Lot twelve point oh one, the westerly neighbor. Essentially, the existing property drains primarily to a series of inlets, which connect into that state conveyance system, and eventually discharge off-site. For the proposed condition, we're for the site plan rendering exhibit, now our office did have an opportunity to meet at the TAC review meeting and essentially rework our design and try and address any of the major discussion points that were brought up during that meeting. So the most recent site plan set that was submitted prior to this hearing addresses a number of those things during the TAC review meeting discussions, as well as any of the concerns that were raised in the engineering and planning review letters that we received. As Mr. Papparo mentioned, the proposed development will be very similar, mimic some of the features of the existing site layout. The existing building footprint is proposed to remain, and we're going to be proposing what would be essentially a vertical expansion of the building, converting what is primarily an existing one-story building with a small portion that is two stories along Jersey Avenue to a fully developed three-story tall proposed storage facility. The overall square footage would be a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. Access to the site is proposed to be maintained along Howard Lane with that existing full movement driveway, and that existing cross-access agreement will also be maintained in the proposed condition. The two full movement access points along Jersey Avenue are going to be consolidated and condensed down into one access point, that will allow what we classify as full ingress, meaning left ingress and right ingress, with a restricted right-out-only driveway along the state highway. We are required to receive a minor access permit in order to approve that driveway, so we have made the proper submission to the DOT, and we're coordinating the minor access approval. Overall, the parking fields that you see proposed on the exhibit are essentially broken down into two different sections. Closest to Jersey Avenue, we have what we'll call an off-site customer parking area. This is consistent of one ADA parking space located closest to the building, and an additional nine spaces along Jersey Avenue that are proposed to support the low demand of the anticipated customer frequency for the proposed use. Majority of the parking stalls that you see are actually enclosed with a twelve-foot-high chain-link fence with rolling gates, that is a secure area, and only accessible via a small keypad if you're already a customer and have already established your renters' agreement to rent out one of the interior parking spaces. So this larger field to the south of the building consists of a hundred and fifty-nine what we'll consider storage parking spaces, twenty of which do have a longer depth of forty feet to properly house some atypical storage facilities, maybe a boat or an RV or something like that, that wouldn't actually fit in a standard parking stall size. From a landscaping perspective, what we have proposed is a dense landscape along that front twelve-foot-high fence in order to properly screen not only the fence, but the storage parking lot itself. Now, we are proposing eleven street trees, or sixteen are required, therefore we are requesting a variance, however, a portion of that reasoning is because with our street trees, we're going to have higher canopies, and really what we want to ensure is that it's actually a visual screen, an aesthetic buffer, from the street into the storage parking lot. So we've actually supplemented those eleven street trees with twenty-six evergreen trees, which will add a fuller, denser landscaping buffer from the, you know, from the lower elevations above the grade, as well as some additional evergreen shrubs. So we felt overall, even though it's deficient from a street tree perspective, we do feel it's appropriate and adequate to screen the outdoor parking facility. From a lighting perspective, we did hear and respond to some of the requirements brought up in the TAC meeting, essentially there's a minimum one-point-zero-foot candles within a parking area that is to be established. We have revised our lighting design in order to comply with that requirement within the outdoor storage area, simply required adding a couple more additional light fixtures, however, we do have an area that provides a minimum zero-point-three-foot candles, which is actually located in the northeastern portion of the property, near a loading bay. Now, the only reason we're requesting this variance is because we felt just as a general engineering practice, if we were to provide additional light fixtures in order to meet that requirement in this portion of the drive aisle that's not quite as used as often as some of the other parking areas, we just felt like the lighting would be overdesigned at that point, so we do request a variance to allow for some minimal lighting, especially up along the roadway, where we don't feel there would be a lot of vehicular activity and essentially hardly any pedestrian activity. From a stormwater management design perspective, as I mentioned, we have the unique scenario of a state conveyance pipe which runs through our property. Essentially, the location of that pipe where it is today, it really doesn't allow for a lot of space on site to be utilized to design and construct an underground detention basin, so what we're proposing is within our property, we're going to be reconfiguring the pipe location for the state system in order to properly provide enough significant space for underground detention basin to be proposed underneath the storage parking lot. Now, based on the overall disturbance of the development and the increase in impervious coverage, both by state and city regulations, the development is required to meet post-construction runoff rate quantity reductions as it relates to the applicable stormwater events, so we've provided a design which essentially results with a very large underground detention basin that would be consisting of twelve rows of each row of a hundred and thirty-foot-long, solid, thirty-six-inch diameter, plastic pipe. Essentially, this large underground basin would collect water from a series of inlets and pipes throughout the property and temporarily hold it back before entering into the state system. It will eventually discharge into that same state system as it does today, but it will be discharging at a slower rate compared to the existing conditions today. In addition, the utilities that are currently serving the building are essentially proposed to be reused with some minor modifications based on coordination with the local utility authorities, specifically in one of the review letters, it mentions an electric utility pole with a transformer, it's located in the northeastern corner of the building, that is, that will be coordinated with the local utility authority to ensure that we meet any vertical or horizontal clearances that are required for that transformer and upgrade it essentially as necessary for the proposed development. Just from a bulk requirement standpoint, the existing building does lie and create an existing nonconformity for being within the front side and rear setback requirements, however, aside from those existing nonconformities with the existing building, the rest of the development has been designed in order to comply with those bulk regulations as far as floor area ratio, building area, impervious coverage, everything else other than those existing nonconformities. There are a number of outside agencies that also have jurisdiction on this development, as I mentioned, obviously with the driveway being along the state highway, we are seeking the minor access permit from the DOT. In addition, because Howard Lane is a county roadway, we're also seeking a county site plan approval, and we are also in the DRCC area where the Delaware River Raritan Canal Commission has jurisdiction over stormwater management design, so we've also submitted to them in order to seek their approval for our proposed design. And lastly, we'll also be seeking a certification from the Free Old Soil Conservation District. We've also had a chance to receive and review the planning and engineering letters. We've also had a chance to receive and review the planning and engineering letters now prepared by the city. The engineering letter, the most recent one, was just out a couple days ago. We went through, we were happy to see a number of those items had already been addressed by our site plan revisions that we recently submitted, and we do feel that a number of the other items in there didn't seem too consequential, and, and we can happily say that the applicant would be able to oblige by those regulations.
Mr. Knozian, a few follow-up points. As part of your submission package, some of the sheets, you did include turning templates for the various vehicles that would be entering the site.
That's right.
Whether they're refuse, delivery moving vehicles, and based on your engineering analysis, all the proposed or anticipated vehicles all can traverse the site safely, and you've taken that into consideration with the radius that you provided?
That's right. We actually did have to make some minor changes to our site plan layout in order to make sure that the township fire truck would properly circulate, the trash truck could easily access the proposed enclosure that's located in the central portion of the site, as well as, of course, all the anticipated vehicles for the use.
Can you point out the two access points where they're being consolidated into one where the trash?
Yep. So, this is, because this is the proposed site plan, this shows the proposed driveway with the left-in ingress, right-in ingress, and right-out only. And then, from an existing conditions standpoint...
You're referring to exhibit A1?
Yeah, this is A1, the aerial exhibit. The largest driveway along Jersey Avenue is shown where the concrete driveway is, and then there is a small, it's rather difficult to see on the, on the area, but there's a small little driveway all the way on the northern side of Jersey Avenue.
And that's the end of the now.
That's correct.
Mr. Knozian, as part of your discussion, you've mentioned the, the variance relief that's required, and we do have Mr. Olivo who's going to discuss this application from a traffic and planning perspective, but we are requesting a variance from the parking requirements. 60 spaces are required according through the New Brunswick Code, and we're providing a total of 10, correct?
That's right.
And again, Mr. Olivo will provide the justification for that. We are also on your plans requesting relief from the building signs, correct?
That's right.
And then, the architect will come forward to discuss the architecture of the building. There is no freestanding sign proposed. There's two wall-mounted signs which do require variance relief from your code, and again, the architect and the planner will discuss this in great detail. I have nothing further for Mr. Knozian. Thank you.
Did you say on the, the new access point that's being created on Route 91, there's going to be a right-hand turn lane and a left-hand turn lane? Is that, or is that right-hand only? You're going to be only able to go right out there?
You were only able to go right out.
Okay. And then on Howell Lane, you're going to be able to make a left or a right?
That's correct.
Can you explain the street trees again? So, you're proposing less, but because more coverage? Can you explain that a little bit?
Essentially, based on the frontage requirements, the, the calculation equates to 16 being required. What we've done is we've proposed 11 that we've essentially strategically scattered throughout, along this front buffer. Those, those street trees will have a higher canopy, so if you were to actually look into the storage parking lot, you would, you'd be able to see underneath those trees. The additional shrubs and evergreen trees that we're planting are thicker at lower elevations, so we felt the combination of the two, rather than just street trees, would actually provide the fuller, more dense buffer that we're, that we believe is the intention.
The TAC has reviewed this in the last...
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of your call. What I'm trying to say is, so when you're going by visually, you'll have a screen.
And he's done exactly what we asked him to do, so.
Okay.
Okay.
When we ask to seek relief on the extra trees, we ought to pay it into the tree fund. Okay. Okay. Very good.
Do I have to show you? Someone else will be addressing traffic.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Knozian. Our next witness this evening is the project architect, Mark Sullivan.
Could you raise your right hand, state your names, tell your last name, please?
Mark Sullivan, S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N.
And you swear to the truth in this matter?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Sullivan, for the benefit of the board and public, your education area of expertise and the license as you hold, sir.
Hi. Evening, everybody. My name is Mark Sullivan. I'm the project architect for this building. I went to the University of Illinois.
I don't know that he's ever appeared before this board.
I have not.
If we could just get his education and whether he's ever appeared before any of the boards here in the state of New Jersey, and finally, with your license here in New Jersey.
I'm, I've got a degree from the University of Illinois, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, New Jersey, and about 20 other states around the mid-Atlantic area. I've appeared before at Sea of Chicago and Chicago metro area planning and zoning boards, Sea of Miami, Tamarack, and Hialeah planning and zoning boards, Sea of Boston planning and zoning, and City of Larchmont, New York, planning and zoning boards.
This would be your first board in New Jersey?
This would be my first board in New Jersey, yes.
And your license is current in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, your firm prepared the architectural floor plans and elevations for the renovation, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
And the plans that were submitted, I believe we have mounted versions for your presentation.
Yes, we do.
Counsel, I don't, I don't know if we need to mark those. They're the same as what was submitted?
Just identify the page sheet.
Thank you.
What I've got for you tonight are two exhibits. The first exhibit just shows the floor plans and has some building data on it, and a schematic building section which I'll go through in a minute. And the second plan I have is that of the elevations of the building, which will describe what we're planning on doing with the building and the materials that we're using to accomplish the new repurposed building. Do you want me to label these as exhibits?
You won't need to. Just refer to it by the sheet number.
Of course.
It really isn't a sheet number, but I can refer to it as the floor plan, turning section, and unit mix schedule.
You want to let me mark it? Let me mark it A3.
All right, A3.
And that's the floor plan and unit mix.
So, we've got 884 total units in the building, ranging in size from 5 by 5 to 10 by 30. It'll be a fully compliant, fully sprinkled building with seven points of access for ingress, egress, and four loading bays in and out of the building. We're reusing the existing perimeter and building outline. We're going to reuse the foundations and the slab that are in the building, and we're just going to build up on the existing walls that are there, add two more floors, excuse me, one more floor to make it a three-story building in total. Building will be fully ADA compliant and fully code compliant with the state and city of New Jersey. What we're doing is taking the existing building, which is about an 18-foot-tall building, and we're adding another floor onto it to make it a total height of 38 feet. We're going to reuse, as I said, the existing walls and foundations, and we're going to reskin the building with corrugated metal and metal panels. On the, the main facade of the building, in our loading base, we'll use glass doors so you can see into the loading areas with some metal panels at the base. We'll make an expression at the, the main entry with some canopies over the loading in the office and some clear storage windows, so you can kind of see what's going on inside the building. We'll give it some color variation with some green panels and some silver panels and some mint gray panels, just to give it some interest. And that will continue around the building on all four sides.
Can you orient me a little bit, when you say the front facade, is that on Route 91?
Yeah, let's see. So, this facade, the southeast facade is on Route 91.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would be the front of the building on Route 91 right here, because that's what you would see from the street. We've done this pretty extensively throughout, you know, the eastern part of the United States. It's come off pretty successfully. It takes old buildings and repurposes them and gives them a pretty nice look, you know, to the building and something of interest, a little bit more than just an industrial building.
You've had an opportunity to review the reports from the board professionals. From an architectural standpoint, do you have any objections to complying with any of those requests?
No, we do not.
I have nothing further for Mr. Sullivan at this time. Next, I'd like to call Morgan Boland from the applicant to talk about operations. You've heard from the technical side of it, from the engineering and architectural, but I thought it'd be good just to get an understanding of how the self-storage operation, how they anticipate using this building, and he'll explain a little more what you've already heard from a technical standpoint.
Can you read your right hand statement, tell your last name?
Morgan Boland, the...
Do you do health again?
Yes, it's a N A C, yes.
And you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do, yes. Thank you. Evening, everyone.
And you're from the applicant, correct?
I am, yes. I'm an authorized representation of Jersey, a new storage LP.
Can you just briefly explain your experience in the self-storage industry and what you're envisioning for this site with the existing warehouse and converting it by adding the two floors for the three-story building?
Absolutely. So, our experience, we've been doing this just for a little bit over five years now. We currently have 16 projects across the US, including states in Arizona, Michigan, Ohio, New Jersey, New York, Wisconsin, and Illinois, just to name a few. We currently believe that this building is going to succeed quite well as a self-storage facilities. We do a very in-depth analysis on the market to determine what type of competitors around, what type of demand there is, and whether or not the facility will do well. So, we did that in this one. We determined that there's seven competitors in a three-mile radius, about nine competitors in a five-mile radius, and that the market is incredibly undersupplied for self-storage. Currently, in the three-mile radius, there's about 2.8 square feet per capita, and the five-mile radius about 2.1. And with the addition of our facility, it's still going to be quite undersupplied at 3.5 square feet per capita and 2.5 square feet per capita, three-five radius. We use one of the publicly traded self-storage rates to come in and manage the facility on a day-to-day operations, and we recognize them as public storage, keep smart, extra space, life storage, those guys are managers. This one will be, as I said, we manage one of these third-party publicly traded self-storage rates. Office hours for them, Monday to Friday, usually about 9:00 AM to 6:30, Sunday, 9:30 to 5:30, and Sundays, very depending on the operator, normally about 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
How about the access for the customers? Mr. Knozian discussed keypad gate entrance. Can you discuss when the bulk of the facility and the vehicle storage will be open to the customers?
Sure. So, the unloading bays on the facility, once you're a customer actually using a unit, those are accessed by an individual keypad code. So, you have to go into the, the unloading bay door, enter your code, and then you get access to the building. Again, there's another door once you get in the loading bay that has to use that unique identifier code to access the building. Same thing goes for the parking lot. That will be completely gated off, and that is only accessible, again, for the manager of the facility or one of the existing customers with their unique keypad identification codes.
Well, who's going to park in the parking lot that's being stored? What kind of cars or vehicles are...
Sure, so it's...
Who parks a car there and just leaves it?
Anybody that has an extra vehicle. You see people that have extra vehicles, boats, RVs. It can also be someone who's a subcontractor, you know, if you're a plumber and you have your extra vehicles, you might go store them there. It's anybody really who has a licensed operable vehicle that can go in there.
There's no junk, it's just all licensed vehicles?
Correct. No junk, no pods, no pads of material, nothing like that. It's just, the largest thing you might see in there is a box truck, again, belonging to a subcontractor who might be storing his tools inside the building in a storage unit, and then his vehicle in the loading lot.
So, all the vehicles have to be registered or road-ready, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
And you also provide, similar to the interior storage units, you provide the potential customer and the rental agreement for those vehicle storage spaces, which provides the dos and don'ts, correct?
Absolutely, yep. There's very specific guidelines for what you can store within the storage facility and the specific unit, as well as if you're somebody using a parking space, guidelines in that lease agreement.
You discussed at the TAC that you were offering some waivers as the mitigations for your variance related to no storage of any junk or unregistered cars.
Correct.
No truck-trailer storage. Not truck, truck-trailers.
No, you're correct. There's no tractor-trailer?
No tractor-trailer, no semi-trucks. Again, as I said, the largest vehicle you might see in there is a box truck, a U-Haul or Penske-type style.
And there won't be any outdoor storage of bulk material or equipment or machinery?
No.
Everything is a vehicle?
Correct.
Do you rent any kind of vehicle for this facility?
It depends on the, so, we have it across the US where we enter into contracts with U-Haul or Penske and may have a couple trucks on-site for our customers to use when they're moving in and out. Currently, for this facility, we do not. It might be something that we want to explore down the road, but as of now, there are no vehicles available for rent.
I have nothing further for Ms. Boland at this time.
Chairman, but just for clarification, did I hear Ms. Boland indicate that this was, that there would be a third-party public storage REIT that would be managing the property?
Correct, yes.
Could you clarify that? I'm, I'm not sure that I understand who's going to actually be managing the property.
Sure. So, the, the name of the manager for this one is going to be Extra Space Self-Storage. You may see them around the area. From our site, there's one that's about 3.9 miles away, and another one that's closer to five miles away from us. Again, when I refer to publicly traded self-storage REITs, those include the Cube Smart Self-Storage, public storage, life storage, the big operators that you see nationally.
And is there consistency between those operators as to the testimony you provide as far as the hours and the number of employees?
Absolutely.
I don't think we actually provided that. Let's talk about staff and the number of employees.
So, typically, the facility has one to two employees on-site, including your store manager and your general manager. At the beginning, you may have more. You might have someone coming from a store nearby, start training these employees if they're generally new, and then, once the employees get familiar with the site, the types of customers that are coming in, just the demand you're seeing, or generally just the day-to-day operation, that again might taper down from that three or two and a half back to, to one person. It really depends on the activity of the facility, whether they need one to two people full-time.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Chair, our final witness this evening is Charles Olivo. He is our traffic engineer and planner. We'll discuss the project from the traffic perspective, as well as the variances that we're requesting.
Could you raise your right hand, state your names, tell your last name, please, please?
Charles Olivo, O-L-I-V-E-S, and Victor O.
And you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do.
Mr. Olivo, for the board and the public, your education area of expertise and the license as you hold, sir.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
We're pretty familiar with Mr. Olivo. He was about six, seven years old.
Thank you.
Mr. Olivo, you're referring to A2, correct?
Yes, I'm going to refer back to exhibit A2, which is the colorized site plan rendering, which has been prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design. So, just again, to orient the board, we're looking at Jersey Avenue, which is the state highway, running along the bottom of the exhibit. So, essentially, as you look at the exhibit board, to the left-hand side is south, so traveling in north towards the right hand of the exhibit. Howell Lane is running across the left-hand side of the exhibit, and this is a county roadway. So, this is a very important arterial intersection within the city of New Brunswick. Confluence of traffic that travels through here is obviously accommodating commerce, commercial, industrial, warehousing traffic within this particular area. And what you have on the site today, as you've heard from a number of the witnesses that have preceded me, is essentially a defunct warehousing or industrial building and site. The features of the site, site, stormwater management, lighting, et cetera, are all in a condition where they are in disrepair or not functioning at this time. And generally speaking, as you travel along Jersey Avenue, which is the state highway, state Route 91, you'll see that most of the buildings are oriented the way that the building side that runs along that frontage is shown here. And in fact, as you continue north away from this site, you'll see some smaller parking areas that are somewhat effectively jammed in between Route 91 and the building walls themselves. And under existing conditions, as you've heard from Mr. Knozian, there are two full movement driveways. One, a rather large, unchanalized concrete apron, which likely facilitated... driveways. One, a rather large, unchanalized concrete apron, which likely facilitated larger tractor-trailer traffic for this site. And then, just to the north of that, there are a number of angled parking stalls and another open curb cut, which lacks channelization, direction, signage, et cetera. And more than likely on the site in the pre-existing state, you had warehousing, industrial, again, within the zone, larger tractor-trailers, truck traffic that were traveling through the intersection destined for the site using either of the access points to get into and out of the property. Under the proposed condition, and what we studied as part of the traffic assessment, is the consolidation of access along the Jersey Avenue frontage. So we're not only going to take two full-movement access points and consolidate them into one, but we're really consolidating the width as well. You have those very large curb cuts, which allow for traffic to move in somewhat of a haphazard manner, and we're going to channelize that and bring that into compliance with more modern techniques about driveway movements facilitating traffic movements in accordance with MUTCD signage and striping requirements. We have made application to the Department of Transportation. This would be considered under the lowest threshold for permitting or minor access permit. So we'd like to think that would take a little bit of a shorter time in terms of turnaround and review. But what I'll speak about further is the fact that when you look at the traffic generation associated with the adaptive reuse and the modification of this site, self-storage is one of the lowest generating uses when you look at industrial, commercial warehousing in terms of trips per square foot. So this type of use generates very low amounts of traffic just by virtue of the type of land use that it is. So in terms of the state highway access point, we would be taking the driveways, which are full movement, and creating a left-turn-out restricted driveway. So you can make the left turn in, right turn in, and you'd be able to make the right turn out as well. The access point on Howe Lane would be re-strights, re-signs. There is a cross-access point that provides access into a relatively small parking field, and that would remain as well within the proposed condition. Both intersections have excellent spacing from the signalized intersection proper, so we do not expect that the movement of traffic to and from this property would impact the signalized intersection of Howe and Jersey, which is an important consideration. We more than exceed the spacing requirements that the Department of Transportation and the county would require for these types of driveways. Now, in terms of the accessibility of the site, as you've heard from the operator and the applicant, this site would be a self-storage facility with 10 parking stalls that are located in the, call it, easterly portion of the site, the portion of the site fronting on State Route 91. In addition to that, there are 159 parking stalls, which are located within a completely secure gated area. And in terms of your accessing of the self-storage units themselves within the building, the access that you would utilize to travel into the site for the purposes of signing up for the rental of a self-storage unit, or the loading or unloading of one of those units, would be through that Route 91, the Jersey Avenue entrance and exit. Now, those that would be interested in utilizing the gated, fenced-off area for vehicle storage, as you've heard, there would be keypad area located adjacent to both of the sliding gates. And you'd be able to access that keypad area after traveling well into the site. So a vehicle is not sitting in the driveway curb cut next to these arterial roadways. You pull into the site, right up to a keypad area, you punch in your unique code, which is unique to each of the users of the property, and then you're able to enter into that particular area of the site. So there are two gated access points, again, that are well into the property itself. From a trip generation perspective, we have utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to, what I'll say is, conservatively estimate the amount of traffic associated with this type of project. If you were to take the industrial building that you have today and repopulate it, modernize it, same footprint, same parking field, you would likely have more tractor-trailer traffic, and you would likely have more traffic just simply in general, both on a peak hour basis and a daily basis, as compared to the proposed use that you have here, the storage type of use. What the Institute of Transportation Engineers puts forth within their most recent Trip Generation Manual for this type of land use is that during the morning and the evening peak periods, you again have very low levels of traffic volume, anywhere between 20 trips in the peak hour or less. On a Saturday or weekend is when you may expect to see the peak period of this type of use, during approximately the midday peak. Now, this is when the levels of traffic that you see on both Howe and Jersey are at lower levels than they, of course, are during the week, because that's really when you have that weekday commuter rush period traffic, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And so this site complements the roadway very well. Number one, in that it reduces the traffic significantly if you were to compare it to other users. The types of vehicles coming to the site, as you've heard, likely no larger than a box truck versus a warehousing industrial use, which, of course, you'd be expected to have shift changes during the morning and the evening peaks, perhaps with larger vehicles, and loading bays traveling in and out throughout the course of the day. So from an access management perspective, we are improving your ability to travel into and out of the site, consolidating access, restricting some of the access movements, the left turn out specifically along the state highway. And then also, we're reducing the levels of traffic that are coming on and off the site by virtue of this adaptive reuse and redevelopment of the site. From a parking perspective, we are seeking a parking variance. In terms of the parking requirement for this type of use, I'll say that it is more akin to what you would find for warehousing industrial type use, and the requirement is 60 parking stalls. The self-storage use is becoming more of a version in use, more prolifically being developed throughout the state of New Jersey and the metro area by virtue of a number of the changing dynamics in land development patterns and plans. And what we're finding is that this amount of parking, we see anywhere from six parking stalls to 10 parking stalls. This is one of the higher that I've seen in the last six months to a year in terms of this more modern self-storage offering. And so we've counted a sample site of similar size located in Bergen County, and we've counted the peak parking demand. And for a site of that size, again, similar to this, we found a peak parking demand of four stalls. That was the highest peak AM, PM, Saturday. The highest peak was during the Saturday period, which was four parking stalls. If you were then to prorate it versus the square footage, just over 140,000, what we have here, you would end up at a peak parking demand of six. And so we have 10 parking stalls proposed, a peak demand expected to be on the order of six parking stalls. So we would be expected to more than accommodate the peak parking demand that you would expect for a site such as this. Again, the operator has reinforced that, that they wouldn't build this site with the amount of parking that's shown here if it wasn't adequate for their operations in other sites of similar size. So from traffic perspective, from purely in and out, this site would not have a significant impact at the driveways. In fact, I think there's an improvement at the driveways and also at the intersection proper. Very low levels of traffic traveling to that intersection, well under what we would consider a threshold that would potentially change the level of service of an intersection, which is typically around 100. As we've spoken about, we're well under that, anywhere from a third to half of that, based on even the most conservative estimates for what this site would potentially generate. And from a parking perspective, the parking that would be provided on the site for the purposes of customers and employees would be more than adequate to accommodate the demand.
Mr. Olivo, putting on your planning hat, you've already discussed the parking variance, and that really tied into your traffic and your observations as a traffic engineer studying other self-storage sites. Moving on to some of the other variances that have been noted by the other witnesses, Mr. Kanozian talked about the fact that the current building footprint does violate the setbacks of New Brunswick code. And by going vertical, technically, those are new variances. Can you just provide a brief discussion from a planning perspective what would justify that? And it's my understanding that we're not encroaching any further into those setbacks. Is that a...
That is correct. We are not. And if we were to call them variances rather than existing non-conformities, the building walls, as they're located in the northeast corner of the property, the building wall is fronts on 91, and then it comes to the adjacent property to the north, as well as the building wall, and these are all existing building walls as it's located adjacent to the property to the west, are all walls that will be remaining in their location, but we will be changing essentially the elevation or the height of the building. Now, one of the goals of the master plan, the visioning that's spoken about, is exactly what we're doing here, which is the adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of obsolete, defunct industrial buildings. And that is what we're taking here. We're modernizing with both the use in terms of what the market demands, as well as the architecture and the other features. But by keeping the building where it is, I believe we are furthering those goals of the master plan. And I also believe that we're advancing certain purposes as it relates to municipal land use law and purposes of land use, in terms of good civic design, efficiently using the land in terms of construction practices by being able to keep that footprint and do more with it.
And Mr. Olivo, the neighbors both to the, what I'll call the right, if you're on Jersey Avenue, I know there's a direction that you'll give me that's to east. We are actually abutting a driveway, meaning there is no adjacent building per se. So by going vertical, is it a fact that there would be no negative impact since we...
Yes.
Basically, abut the driveway?
Yes. Essentially, what you have to the north of the parking field and the building wall is a circulation out that provides access into the property to the north on Jersey Avenue. And under existing conditions, we have angled parking stalls and a driveway directly in that area in addition to that small bump out of the building facade. And we'd be removing that driveway, maintaining the building wall as shown.
Mr. Kanozian spoke about some minor relief from the lighting requirements. It was his opinion in his testimony that we could certainly comply and increase the lighting, but due to the limited use, I believe his testimony was in that area, that he didn't feel was warranted. As a planner, would you concur with that statement?
I would agree. The deviation from the zoning that we have with regard to lighting has to do with the minimum foot candle intensity. And the minimum requirement is one foot candle, and we would be seeking a variance for .3 foot candles. And if we think about what's happening generally in the area of vehicle storage and parking, is that you have landscaping that effectively enshrouds the site as you're located along the diagonal of the property line at the intersection of Howe and Jersey, and then it continues down Howe Lane. And Mr. Kanozian spoke about this very comprehensive and strongly planted landscaping plan that allows for taller canopies, as well as under-story plantings, to really complement the taller branches by having some lower-growing evergreens and other types of plantings. And then, a layer in from that, we have the fence, and a layer in from that, we have the lighting. And there is a minimum foot candle intensity of .3, but this would be a well-lit site that we're attempting to balance some of those foot candle intensities throughout the lot. I don't think that that would have a detriment on the health, welfare, and safety of the public that would be traversing the site.
So you've had to reduce the lighting level, you still feel it's adequate for the anticipated usage by the customers?
Yes.
Moving on finally to the signage variances. Mr. Sullivan discussed the elevations of the building. His Exhibit A4 does show some proposed building signs, again, building mounted signage only. Can you just briefly discuss the variance relief and the justification for this board's granted variances?
Yes. Now, we are not seeking any freestanding signs. It's not uncommon to see pylon signs, monument signs located at driveways for this type of use. But what we are seeking are larger than the allowable size building signage located on two of the four elevations. And that is purely for identification purposes for the site. So in lieu of having freestanding signs, attempting to be able to be, to be able to provide adequate signage for wayfinding, seeing the site, and then being able to maneuver and make a decision about coming into the site, we believe that the signage is not overstated or garish in any way. It works with the building's size, the breakup of the building. It is simply there for identification purposes.
And Mr. Olivo, this building is essentially tucked in a corner of the site, meaning it is set back a great distance from the Howe Lane and Jersey Avenue intersection. Is that correct?
It is. It is set back, and there is also various layers of buffer before you actually get to the building itself.
So in your opinion, as a planner, do you feel that the variance relief for the proposed size of the two signs is warranted based on the particular nature of this site and what's proposed?
I do, yes.
And you've had an opportunity to review the reports from the board professionals?
I have, yes.
And I believe you addressed those issues in your direct testimony. Do you have any problems complying with any of those requests as a condition of approval?
No, I do not.
I have nothing further for Mr. Olivo. Thank you.
Question, if I may? To the top of the page is Lot 12.01, and there is a building on that lot. Adjacent to the property line and that building, there appears to be on the site plans, an access driveway that goes from left to right. Do you know, it appears that that is going to have to be removed or deleted when you put in your fencing or whatever on that portion of the property? Is that a correct understanding?
The driveway that leads along?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding is that that area of asphalt paving would be removed in the proposed condition, and that that ability to traverse between would be eliminated as well.
Okay. So is there access that is going to be maintained for that building to the top of the page? It appears that that's their access driveway from the drawings.
That's not correct. The only access to 12.01 is where Mr. Kanozian and Mr. Olivo discussed. That's this access. That's the benefit of 12.01. That allows them to make a left into the site and use as parking area. What you're referring to, sir, is the easement that was granted by this property owner to our predecessor. They used to use a driveway themselves.
That answers the question.
Yeah, there was two. It's confusing. I know. They were part of the application. It's hard to distinguish whose is whose, but that took me a little bit. But that's the way that it works. We were actually, our predecessor entitled an easement back when the warehouse are used, a driveway that actually encroaches on our neighbor's property.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Your work.
Could you clarify a little bit? Piki indicated that there would be, the ITE data was saying that weekday peaks would be about 20 trips per hour, potentially could be a little higher on the weekends. And there are four to six, or 10 parking spaces. I mean, my sense is if people go to a storage facility, you're there for more than a couple of minutes. It seems like there might be, you could maybe use a couple more parking spaces than what you have here. We have 884 storage units. Seems like, to my sense, that a few more parking spaces might be justified, and certainly have enough other parking spaces on the site to be able to do that. Someone could address that a little?
Sure. After reviewing the ITE, which recently, the Trip Generation Manual has been published more recently, last year, but the Parking Generation Manual has not been updated. And as this use in its, I'll call it more modern form, where you don't have the garages that you pull into more laid out on a site on one level, vehicle pulls up to a garage, lifts the door, and you have the storage units that are actually stacked within a building, the parking requirements that we're seeing as a result of studying actual sites that are operating today are quite far diminished from where they were shown to be within... that are operating today are quite far diminished from where they were shown to be within the parking generation manual. So what we like to do when we see a use like this, a burgeoning use, a use that's starting to come out more and more in a more modern form, is we like to count it, to understand what kind of sample data is actually out there. In talking with the operator, the 10 parking stalls is pretty much all they need in order to support this, in addition to what I'll say is, Mr. Patterson, that we have the 10, and then we have the loading areas as well. So we're doing a little bit better with the 10 parking stalls by virtue of having these loading doors or berths where you're actually actively moving in or out. And I believe that that is what provides the sufficiency in the parking and the loading design.
So there's 884 spaces. I mean, it just seems like a lot. This is one of the statistics we have at T X C that, you know, 5% of people show up at the same time. You know, this is not a place you walk to.
Right.
So that was a...
One of the things that we can do operationally to try to balance the need for more parking is give the employees actually keypad access so they can park within the gated area. So take two parking stalls out, put them into the gated area.
Meaning to free up?
Yes.
So essentially, the employees wouldn't be consuming the customer parking now. They would be...
The 10 and the loading would be allocated just to customers.
And the employees, and I think the testimony was the maximum, too, those two employees would be directed to utilize the vehicle storage.
Yes.
How many people on a regular basis would be using the parking outside the gate versus the loading area? Do you have any information on what's typical?
In terms of stratifying the loading and the actual parking? Well, generally speaking, not many people are using either of them on a daily basis. What the operator's data shows, as well as sample counts show, is again, a peak parking demand of actual four in allocated stalls. And then one or two using the loading berths at any given time for the purposes of loading or unloading their goods. It's a very low generator in parking and very low generator in traffic, and tends to be gradually interspersed throughout the course of a typical day.
Is that, so the spaces within the gate are all, outside of the loading zones, can all be leased? 100% of that can be?
Yes.
Yes.
All that's for parking. Yes.
Traffic on Jersey Avenue is particularly unique because of the presence of the Jersey Avenue New Year's Transit Station, about half a mile to the north on Jersey Avenue. At certain times of the day, that light at Howe Lane going south is just solid vehicles. So if you're making a left-hand turn going south into that entrance at that particular time, do luck, I think. And so the question is, is that taken into consideration in the traffic study? And also, if a person does, may try to make a left turn into that lot, does that prevent cars from passing them? Or is it kind of a dedicated lane for that left-hand turn? I'm talking about going south on Jersey Avenue, making a left into the facility.
First question has to do with, does the assessment include the queuing that occurs today back from the signal? And it does. And if this were a higher generating use of traffic, I might have a concern about the ability of vehicles to get in, and they're impeded in the flow. But based on the fact that this is a very low generator, and likely lower than if you were to reuse the site today, that is not a concern that I would have in terms of vehicles being able to make that turn occasionally. This is very infrequently during peak hours.
You know, I'm just, I'm kind of questioning the feasibility of having, allowing folks to make that left turn into that, the safety of allowing folks to make a left turn.
Well, the Department of Transportation is reviewing this driveway as it stands right now. To your second question, about if a vehicle were staged to make a left turn in, that queuing occurs, can you get around them? You can't. You have a full shoulder around the end, around the side from there.
There's also a lot, a lot of people on that road on bicycles at night. You know, it's very open to joy.
I think in some ways, by redeveloping lighting, providing those types of modern features, it'll help. This is just really a dark spot on the map right now.
Left turns were prohibited there, is that going to be particularly problematic?
A left turn in?
Yeah.
I think the challenge there is understanding that the access point on Howe Lane is generally for the vehicle storage. This really becomes your access point to get in and out of the site principally for the self-storage unit themselves. And we, based on the low amount of volume, the fact that you can pass, and generally speaking, the gaps in traffic that would occur just by either courtesy or during off-peak times, because you don't expect a lot of traffic to be traveling into the site via that movement during that peak period. Saturday, when that peak period is far diminished, morning, actually, the site in many ways operates after the peak period occurs, we'd like to keep that left turn in, understanding that we'd not be able to get the left turn out.
Doesn't it make more sense to encourage people to use the other entrance? At the Howe Lane, yeah. Or is that not going to occur?
It won't.
That is the only entrance?
That is for the self-storage units, yes.
Yes.
Quick through the chair. Mr. Levo, were you involved with the quick check over in New Brunswick? Now, when you went through the state for the access permit there, there are two different animals in terms of traffic generation. But the state required you, because I think it was important, the quick check to have a left turn in from Jersey Avenue?
Yes.
And the state obliged, not you, but the quick check, to restrict Jersey Avenue to accommodate that. And you also changed the signal timing, as I recall.
Yes.
Would you anticipate that the state will oblige you to put a centerline left turn lane here? It seems to me that you have had a quick heartway with.
Not here. And the reason why is that typically when you provide a channelized left turn bay, such as the one that has been provided at the quick check, is when you're looking at peak hour volumes of anywhere between 100 to 150 vehicles turning in during an hour, during a peak hour, to make that turn into the site. We're looking on the order of two to three during that peak hour. And so you wouldn't build that infrastructure for such a small movement. And that's typically with drives, whether or not you create pavement, striping, et cetera, in order to accommodate it.
What kind of improvement would the state D O T would ask you to, I guess, implement here?
Well, they will ask us to, I think they'll be very happy to see that the driveways are consolidated. The first driveway closest to Jersey Avenue, it blows the curb line opening requirement out of the water. 50 feet is a maximum, and that driveway is likely well wider than that. So we're bringing this into compliance with those requirements. After they see this, I'm hopeful that they don't ask for much, but it is the D O T, so we'll see what they have for us. But typically, they're looking for M U T C D signage, striping, and if we're going to channelize or restrict the movement, a pork chop island similar to what we've shown here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no further witnesses. Obviously, all of our witnesses are still here and available for questions from the public, if there are any. Thank you.
If anyone from the public would like to come forward, sir?
Sir, gentlemen, raise your right hand, state your names, spell your last name.
I'm Frank Ishasun. G S. George.
Sam.
Charles.
Harry.
O S S.
M V N N.
And you swear the truth is matter?
I do. Chairman, I am the property owner of Lot 12.01, which is a lot adjacent to the property in question. And since you were just talking about traffic, I agree with the chairman here that between certain hours, I own the property for 15 years. And trying to get out of, my exit is here, is about 150 to 200 feet from this exit, from this entrance and exit here to the property in question. You know, at major traffic hours, it is almost impossible to make a left turn onto a lane. The question, though, is, as to, the gentleman said that they were going to park box trucks. That's a far richer concept. A box truck is normally 14 feet long, but can be 26 foot long. So getting out here at night, between the hours of, say, four and six, is going to be extremely difficult. I would suggest that perhaps they should be made to be, to give a right turn or a left turn also. Now, I have a few more questions here. My major concern was drainage. My building is, as I said, I'm adjacent to this, my building is closest to the entrance from Howe Lane to this property here. So, and my first building, the third building, evolved on my property. The first building is along Howe Lane, quite recessed, about 100 feet from Howe Lane. And all the water runoffs from this property here, which are very dynamic, some hydro, and you know, it's pervious, it's a pervious soil. And my concern is runoffs. My building, again, 100 feet from Howe Lane, it has been constantly flooded. I just had to, last year, to have my basement remediated, cost me about $30,000. And we have had success. It's now dry, in front of every major storm. So I had been talking to, I was on vacation, so I didn't have much time to examine these plans. So I had my asset engineer today called Mr. Knozian. I mean, he was very kind and friendly in answering some of the major questions I had. I was gratified to hear that they were going to build some of these underground retention pipes that were going to slow down the release of water into a state sewer line, which again, winds up in a sewer on that property, storm sewer on the property. And that has been also a problem in the past, because it cannot handle all the water runoffs that came from this property and Jersey Avenue. So from what I understand here, that the plastic pipes are supposed to slow down the flow of water through that one pipe, that state pipe that runs onto my property, into the storm sewer, which again, as I said, has a test that can handle water. So I have flood right in the area around that storm sewer. I have a tenant, there's a truck, it has like a truck loading area, and after I've erased them, you can load these trucks because it's a sewage well, it's like a rain. So that, I understand, has, will be remediated to some degree. I don't know how, but that's what Mr. Knozian explained, Knozian explained to us, that that should be accomplished, and it's really, really important for us. Other thing is, the storage of vehicles on this property. About two years ago, I had a bus company, it was a tenant, and for storage buses alongside the property inside, and alongside the Jersey Avenue side, using the Jersey Avenue entrance onto my property. Now, we've had some serious problems with people climbing over fence, sleeping in the buses, that kind of thing. So we obviously have a concern that this has to be really well protected. The other thing, the other concern that we had is that if the new owner is going to allow, the leasing company, storage company is going to allow commercial vehicles to be parked there, box trucks, strip jobs, there needs to be some sort of control, especially if they're commercial vehicles. What is, will be in those trucks, there has to be some sort of questioning, will there be chemicals in the truck? Will there be hazardous materials in the truck? Because I've had it in the past. As I said, on my property, I have several trucking companies, and we are very concerned about it. And we do not allow any vehicle, any box truck or truck material, semis, on the property if they contain any hazardous chemicals. So my concern was if any of these box trucks would be parked there, stored there for any period of time, could be any possible release of hazardous chemicals that would then wash over onto my property. My property was remediated about 15, 20 years ago, and in excess of $500,000 was spent to remediate the property. And as I said, I'm very concerned about any possible polluting agents being stored on these trucks. See what else I have here. I'm sure that they're going to be scolded security cameras. As I said, I just sent back communications, I didn't have a great deal of time to, I've got all of these plans, we have enough time to know that some of these things are, you know, concerning, consider, deserve consideration. See what else I have here. I guess that's about it.
Sam, do you want to address any of that?
Sure. You know, we can recall a lot of witnesses. I can handle the one concern. Ms. Bullen's testimony was that by rental agreements, no customer, whether they're storing things inside the building or in a vehicle, is allowed to contain anything that's hazardous. No hazardous substances are allowed in any vehicle or the storage units. That was by rental agreement. That was her testimony. So I think that should help you on that.
That would help, yes.
The drainage, I believe, if you'd like, I can recall Mr. Knozian, but it sounds like you're okay with his testimony.
Mr. Knozian enlightened me considerably, and I was really gratified to hear that, according to him, instead of having an exacerbating condition, we're going to have a millerated condition. That certainly helps, and that sort of satisfies that duty. And I just hope that that's going to work.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you raise your right hand, state your names, spell your last name for me, please?
My name is Gregory Jason Ames, A Y M B S.
A Y M B S. And you swear the truth is matter?
Yes. Oh, hi. I work in the obsolete, defunct building that's right there, that has more than two people working in it. Nonetheless, just common sense for people who've been in New Brunswick a long time, you put a 12-foot fence here, it's not going to keep anybody out. I really don't care what they say. Just, only because we have fence, we have barbed wire, we have bars, and we have cinder block, and we have locks, and it's iffy. Number two, I make a left-hand turn into my property right here every morning at 6:30, and most people are nice enough to let people in. Just does excite them. Number three, where this curb cutout is bad, it used to be better, but the state moved the road, it's back. Oh, I know why I really got out here. My building over here, this building over here, the building over here, the building over here, and the building over here, all have a subslab remediation in them. Now, I looked at the picture yesterday, because I was on holiday, too, and didn't have enough time, like, frankly. And nowhere on this big picture here do they show subslab remediation? Do they show the blowers? Do they show the pipes? Just ask them why. Are they going to lose rent because they have the pipes running through the building? Are they going to put a big sign up that says, "This lane is contaminated" before they go in there? I see what else I wrote down. I see what else I wrote down. Oh, and I also have a little bit of water over here in the pictures. From the other one. Sorry about that. This one. See this little bit of trees right here? Property that I watch goes from here to the other side of the trees. Where the trees are, that's where the river is, one of the few places that's open, except way over there, way down by Triangle Road. On a good day, the river's only like yay-high in the back. When it rains, the river starts to fill and fill and fill and fill and fill, and it comes up about, eh, maybe twenty feet, and then eventually gets through the pipe. On a really bad day, the trees fall down in front of that sewer, and that river comes way high. If you walk back there, you can just see where it's been eaten up over the last fifty years or so. But, but if they think that they're going to collect all this rainwater here, then magically dump it in here, and they don't think that the water's going to arise, God bless them. And the last thing I'd like to say is, all of this land from here, way down to about here and back, used to be in the garbage dump. So when they go to dig up the parking lots, putting the big pipes in the ground...
Remediation.
Yeah. Who knows what they're going to dig up there and what they're going to find? Because it's all contaminated and, oh, it's...
It's a landfill.
And it's a landfill. And thanks, Frank, that's the key, a landfill. And it's a landfill. And if you dig deep enough, you get to find good stuff from Avon, you get to find good stuff from Mack Foundry with all the heavy metals in it, you get to find bottles to sell down at the flea market for a lot of money. But when they dig all this up, you have to watch and see what comes out of the ground that day. And that's all I really got to say. You miss anything, Frank? Oh, I miss, good, I'm calling Frank back up. I forget. Yeah. So if you're going to talk, you got to be on, you got to talk to the other to be in our... Yeah, and the same, oh, Christ, this sewer, this is a great picture. Okay, this sewer that they're going into, which is here, to about here, is going to shoot right across all of this. And they're going to say that's the state's problem, because the water's going to rise. But it's going to, on a bad day, here to here gets flooded across the axis from all the water coming down here. Because if you look, if you think about Jersey Avenue, this is the high point, and it runs downhill to the river. All water goes to the river, so it's either going to the river area, or it's going to the Mill Run. So all this water runs like that. So in here becomes a big mud pit on, on any day, except for sunny ones in August. All right. Now, I'm done. Thanks, Frank.
I don't know if there, if these sound like those were comments, I don't know if there's any questions directed to any of our witnesses, but they're, again, they're all here if there's any specific questions. Regarding the environmental, I would just note for the record that the applicant conducted all of its environmental investigations, or wouldn't have purchased this property. That includes a phase one and phase two, and obtained any necessary R A O from the D E P. So that's all been taken care of. They would not own this property. So the discussion about the environmental, I think, is a non-issue. But other than that, again, there's drainage questions, we can recall Mr. Carnozian or other things.
Try to raise your right hand, state your names, tell your last name, please.
Charles Cratobal, K R A T O B I L.
And you swear to the oath of allegiance, matter?
Yes, I do. Good evening, members of the board, just a couple of quick questions. I'm intrigued by the automobile storage component of this, and I want to understand, do you have to rent one of the units to be able to rent one of the parking spaces, or is it totally independent? You could rent some of, some of one and some of the other?
Sure. It's a good question. I'll recall Ms. Bullen, Ms. Bullen, I apologize that we didn't do that, and you're correct.
The lease agreements for the self-storage units inside the building is completely separate than the lease agreement for the parking outside. You can definitely lease both. You might have one, two, we have customers that sometimes have five units inside, as well as a parking space outside, but you do not have to have one to have the other.
Thank you. Additionally, if you're a customer of the parking rental, is that twenty-four hours a day if you use your keypad? Do you get it?
No, I apologize, I forgot to expand on those hours there. So the office hours, as I indicated, when manager is actually on-site, Monday through Friday, nine to six-thirty, Saturday, nine-thirty to five, Sunday, usually eleven to three. The entire facility, including the gated parking area, plus if you're an existing customer within the building, will have the keypad access for those logging days. That is usually a six a.m. to ten p.m. hour access. After that, all, the facility almost goes into a lockdown, and you do not have access in either of the building or the parking lot.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and so I just want to note from the board's perspective, if, for instance, the applicant finds that the ten stalls are not enough for their customers, would they be able to, you know, move the gate and change the, you know, put, put more parking spaces to do more than what they promised? Or would they have to come back and get a, come back before the board again?
And they get approved or they get approved. I mean, Cratobal's asking it sort of the opposite way, I think, that, you know, if ten spaces aren't enough, we can't make them put in more.
Right, but if they want, if they wanted to, would they be able to do that? Or would they have to come before the board again? If it's more...
I think they'd probably have to come back, but they, they would be mitigating the, the variance. They'd be nice to come back and ask more, I would say, they've got...
So less than they can rent, or, you know, customers.
Yeah, I just kind of tend to agree with Mr. Patterson. It, you know, might not be enough, and there's certainly a lot of other parking. I, you know, I wish them well, but I, I don't know if they'll fill up all the stalls that they're trying to lease. So I was just trying to save everybody a little time.
If they find their parking needs are insufficient, they can come back and amend the plan.
Okay. Well, just my own input for what it's worth, I think it is a very busy roadway, Jersey Avenue, and perhaps a restriction on the left turn might, might make sense. But it seems like some people think that people are nice enough to let you go. I just, even if it's only a few people, wouldn't want somebody to get in a crash, making a dangerous movement. But, but yeah, I wish, I wish them well with this. It's, it's good to see something being done.
Yeah, I was going to say that. We, we can't do that at state jurisdiction.
Yes, so for some other... Okay, well, thank you. Best of luck. Thanks. Thank you.
Sorry, I got ran low. My name is Gregory Ames, I'm back up here again. Flare. Number one question is, when they dig all this in the ground, is, are they going to check the air quality? Number two, are they going to tell people the land is polluted before they rent it out? I still, in that building, in my building, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to get rid of the vapors that are under the ground. I don't see them on the plans from the architect. I just want to make sure that they are going to either still be there, they just weren't on the picture that day, or they're going to do something else. Because the head of the D E P called me up and told me, "You have to have it, or I'll kick you out of the building." Okay, so that's one point. Oh, and number three, a twelve-foot fence tells you when to keep the dead guys from around to the ground, in my opinion. And that's it.
I think to your left, to your point about the environmental, if they don't comply with the environmental, my choice is the D E P will find them or command for them. So, do you want to speak to, you're representing, I don't want to...
No, again, as I stated before, the owner, the current owner, did their environmental investigations, included phase one and phase two, and secured the necessary approvals, if any, from the D E P, with that would be an R A O. So the sites, from an environmental standpoint, were beyond that. If there were any conditions imposed by the issuance of an R A O, as you said, Chairman, the applicant would have to comply with that, with that approval, if there's any conditions in it. So the environmental issue is, in our opinion, not an issue, because they wouldn't have closed on this property with it being an environmental issue, with an open environmental issue.
And you're, you're complying, you're going to comply with D E P?
We have to, and it's a good segue into my next comment. The discussion about drainage, as Mr. Carnozian said, this is classified as a major development from the D E P standpoint when it comes to stormwater, as well as the city of New Brunswick, and we have to comply with those regulations. That goes to what can be done on the site and what needs to be done from the stormwater management. So as Mr. Carnozian testified, we're obligated with those agencies to comply from a stormwater management perspective. So that's another assurance for the board and public that what we're doing is actually improving the existing situation.
I just want to, yeah, I just want to add one thing. State your names, right here. Thank you, Charles, from beginning, just a quick before. Getting, getting back to this left turn issue in Howland, okay, when I leave my office and most of my tenants, they have arranged their working hours to be from six o'clock or seven o'clock to four, because after that, it's almost impossible to make a left turn, it's that dangerous. When I leave, what I will do is, if I take a left to Jersey Avenue, I will go around it, try to make the left turn, because it's that dangerous.
And I think you're, if I'm correct, the plan is, you can only make, on Jersey Avenue, you can only make a right. Is that accurate, out of the site?
That's correct.
You can only make a right out of the site.
Oh, that's my, oh, I'm sorry.
You can make a left in?
And a right out.
Going in is okay, going in is okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't realize that. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Does the board want to, what are any other issues or items? Everyone okay with the parking as laid out?
Chairman, if the board makes a positive recommendation, I suggest the following conditions. Compliance in terms of D N R engineering report dated January fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Submission of all necessary easements under cross-access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing the same. Paying of site performance bond and amounts of review and approval by the city engineer. Submission of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees amount to be calculated pursuant to Title sixteen, twenty-four, one sixty. Paying of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles thirteen oh four and thirteen oh eight. Road opening permit from the city engineer required. Compliance in terms of the Big Knoll consulting report dated January fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Planning of U S go fund for anticipated post-pro per reviews. Paying of any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to the development or use of the project. Paying of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. It'll say, Scotty, planning board approval to waiver. The North Canal Commission approval to waiver for adult soil conservation district approval to waiver. Finally, with lock consolidation deed. Submit engineering plans to comply with any changes required by planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. There's a voluntary waiver as a mitigation of the parking variance that no junk or unmerited vehicles will be stored at the facility, conditioned to be recorded indeed for the property. Voluntary waiver as mitigation of the parking variance that no truck trailers will be stored at the facility with the condition to be recorded indeed for the property. That the employees will be directed to park in the secured parking area, not the customer parking area. That no hazardous materials will be stored in the storage facility or in the stored vehicles. All utilities and other site improvements to be obtained by the applicant to sole expense. All on-site facilities to be instructed underground or temporary enclosures into the public right of way should require city council approval or construction statements to be done on-site unless an encouragement allowed from the same public right of way approved by city council. Streets should be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant should cause the streets to be cleaned and directed to use over the area of Public Works. Tracking patch should be solid off construction exits. Place to stand in streets, curbs, sidewalks as further direction of the city engineer.
I make a motion to approve all the conditions that the parties suggest.
Pierre Checo? Gail Vickers? Larry Barber?
Yes.
Nigel Castaneda?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Jeff Trump?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Moving on to our second application for tonight. Resnick, Brunswick Realty LLC, application P V two thousand seventeen dash eleven, site plan and variance application for construction of a warehouse addition. We have the property located at twenty-five Van Dyke Avenue, block five ninety-six, lot seven point oh four zoning district.
Good evening, my name is Sadie Glacia from the law firm of Wind Dallas, Mark's Lady Vidmore, here on behalf of the applicant, Resnick Brunswick Realty LLC. We're here for major preliminary and final site plan approval and variance approval for approximately fifty-eight thousand square foot addition to an existing warehouse of the property at twenty-five Van Dyke Avenue here in New Brunswick, block five ninety-six, lot seven point zero four. The purpose of the expansion is that the current tenant at the site is increasing their product line and need more storage space, which is not available in the existing facility. So instead of looking for a new location, we want to expand this building, so that's the purpose for the expansion. The variance that we're seeking tonight is directly related to the expansion. Currently, the property complies with the building coverage requirement, but with the expansion, they're going to exceed the building coverage allowance. We have planning testimony in support of that variance tonight. I have three witnesses. I have an engineer, an architect, and a planner to support the variance, as well as a representative of the owner, if there are any questions to attend to, but he won't be giving any testimony. So without any further ado, I'm going to introduce my first set of witnesses.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name, story, last name, please?
Yes, Brent Papi, P A P I.
Swear to the oath of allegiance, matter?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Papi, can you just briefly give your qualifications to the board so you can be qualified?
Sure. I'm a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Rutgers College of Engineering. I'm a licensed professional, I'm here.
Mr. Papi, you've appeared before this ward in the past, have you?
Yeah.
Have your credentials changed in any way since the last time you appeared as an expert?
No, they haven't. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to speak to an exhibit, it's referred to as the Site Plan Sheet Five of Eleventh. It's the same site plan that's in the site plans that were submitted, except it's a color-rendered version with the landscape being integrated. A one. A one. This exhibit was, the site plan dated October twentieth, two thousand and seventeen. It was last revised December twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, based on the TAC meeting review comments. The exhibit references the Foundry Topographic Survey, existing conditions prepared by Landmark Surveys, for the project site, which is known as block five ninety-six, lot seven point zero four. Sites located along the northeast side of Van Dyke Avenue, within the I two general industrial zoning district. It's bordered by a chemical plant to the south, Alice Jennings Archie Bolt Park to the north, and a community school to the northeast, or northwest, northwest, excuse me. There's also a water tower in the northerly corner, just off of Van Dyke Avenue, and across the street, there's other industrial buildings and a building that is being used by the Department of Children and Families. The subject property has five hundred linear feet of frontage along Van Dyke Avenue. It's got a total area of three hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-two square feet, seven point zero nine acres. It's got a total area of 309,272 square feet, 7.09 acres. The site is currently developed with a one-story office warehouse building that houses a floor area of 106,785 square feet. The applicant's proposing to construct a 58,213 square foot building addition, it's shown here outlined in red, it's toward the back of the building. Its location is where there is, and I'd like to flip to another sheet here if you could lend it. Its location is where there is, this is the existing conditions plan, demolition plan.
E2.
This plan depicts more or less the areas that are being removed to accommodate the addition. What's shown in green is a 10,000 square foot butler building that's being removed. There's also a 3,100 square foot awning, and in yellow, it just highlights some of the other impervious areas that are being removed. There's concrete areas that are just vacant, they're not being utilized. There's also existing railroad tracks on the property that are going to be removed, that I forgot to mention in the other exhibit. The new addition will provide seven new loading bays. They're located right here on the, what's called the westerly facing side of the building. There's also a proposed paved area for semi-truck maneuvering, just in front of those loading bays. And just off to the side, there's a retaining wall and a timber guardrail, just to add in protection. The applicant's proposing to utilize the existing loading bays within this U-shaped area of the building for box truck vehicles only. Right now, it's utilized both for semis and box trucks. With this new addition, it's going to help separate the box trucks and the semi-trucks, and it enables for safer maneuvering in this area with smaller trucks and safer circulation throughout the parking lot. And this area, as I show here with a turning maneuver, this is with a semi-truck that's going to be able to turn and back up. The parking requirements onsite are met for both the employees and company vehicles. The employees park at the paved lot near the front of the property, right here, from the point to that area here, this area here where they park, and here, and off to the side of the building here. There are a total of 57 spaces available. They only have 39 employees required, that require parking for two shifts per day, so they're, they meet the employee parking requirements. Box trucks will utilize the area within the U shape here, where there are a total of 15 spaces for 15 box trucks. And then off to the southerly side, this is where the semis will put, actually do park now. There's nine parking bays for semis. I believe there's only five, let's see, five required for semis, and at the other side of this, this adjacent, there's eight parking spaces for vans, they only have about five vans onsite. So, in all the different aspects of parking, they meet the requirements. The main point of ingress for the site is there's two separate points of ingress and egress. There's one here, just off of Van Dyke, and there's another, just on this side, off of Van Dyke. The speed limit along Van Dyke is 25 miles per hour. There's also, we highlighted two existing speed humps, one before each entranceway, which lowers the speed limit to about 15 miles per hour. So, we feel that that helps improve any concerns with traffic and vehicles turning in and out of the site. We also highlight here, in red, we added to the plan for the board engineer's comment, some site trials, just to demonstrate site visibility in both the oncoming and exiting directions. The, talking about stormwater, the project will increase the impervious lot coverage by 3.5 percent, which is approximately 10,900 square feet. The increase is minimized, since the new addition will replace the existing butler building, as I previously mentioned, as well as that existing concrete area. So, being that our new building's going on top of the existing impervious, overall, for minimizing the increase. The total proposed impervious for the site is 76.88 percent, which is well below the allowable 85 percent. The project site currently drains in the direction from south to north in this area of the property. Everything drains toward Lot 5.05, where there is an existing inlet at the northerly lot line. It's located just beyond the lot line in the park. Runoff from the existing warehouse building and the concrete areas are in overland towards that inlet currently. There's also an existing 15-inch storm pipe that's shown on the grading plan, which is connected to that inlet. And it runs through our property, connects to the inlet, it conveys stormwater from the existing warehouse into that inlet. The proposed development will increase the impervious surface by one quarter of an acre, and therefore, the project is considered a major development by the New Jersey Administration's administrative code, 7 colon 8, excuse me, by the city ordinance. The applicant, in order to address the city code and the ordinance, they're proposing an above-ground detention basin. The above-ground detention basin is located here, just where I'm pointing, in the northerly portion of the property, just beyond the proposed building addition. It's considered a 280 linear foot trapezoidal channel. Basically, there's a shallow berm around this basin that keeps the water contained, and at the bottom of the channel, there's sand with an underdrain, which allows the water to perk into the ground, into a pipe, and enter into, eventually, to the, on the bottom of the basin, has an outlet control structure, which will help mitigate the runoff and meet the 2, 10, and 100-year stormwater peak flow cutback requirements. The reduced flow, actually, I'd like to add to that, there's also, within the outlet control structure, one of the comments I'd like to address is there's an emergency spillway built into the top of the outlet structure with a grate that's meant for any overflows to enter into the box and then exit the system. The exiting pipe from the system, from the outlet control, is connected to that 15-inch pipe, which is already connected to the inlet of the city park. So, any of the proposed building area, any proposed increase is going to be mitigated, is going to be decreased, is going to be routed through the basin, through the outlet control structure, and therefore, there should be no peak, no negative impacts at the downstream In addition to that, the new building addition will be served by the existing utilities from within the existing building. A new fire service lateral is proposed along the southerly lot line, just here, it's a 6-inch lateral to a fire hydrant that was requested by the city, we're showing that now on the plan. Will provide an engineer's water and sewer board for final compliance. With regard to landscaping and lighting, the applicant's proposing 15 new shade trees. They're shown here, these dark green spots along the back portion of the property, along the park, and along the school side. The 3-inch Minone Caliper trees, in accordance with the ordinance. In addition, the applicant's providing a 10-foot landscape buffer along the frontage. I showed here, there's a mix of 10 street trees and assorted shrubs to make up a 10-foot wide landscape buffer along the entire frontage of the property. And it extends beyond, these building gaps are where the dryways are naturally. The applicant will be removing any existing barbed wire atop the existing fence, it was a comment by the board planner and engineer, he's agreed to do that, we have noted that on the plan. New LED light fixtures are also proposed to be mounted to the new building addition, at approximately 15-foot height, to meet the city ordinance light levels on and off site. The applicant will also evaluate the existing lighting onsite, there's another comment by the board professionals, he'll provide updates to the lighting, the existing lighting as needed, to make sure he's in compliance throughout the entire property. Waste and recycling, the applicant is proposing a 10-by-20 enclosure, right here within this U-shaped area. It's, being located here is actually convenient, because this receptacle area is meant for the office spaces, which are housed within this building here, so it's within a close distance for that office building. That can, that 10-by-20 enclosure will have a 6-foot-high vinyl fence surrounding, it'll be gated, it'll house two 6-yard dumpsters for office space recyclables and solid waste. In addition, the applicant proposes a 40-yard dumpster, it's shown here, it's lined up with the inside corner loading bay, and it's meant for warehouse recycling, which is something that we're trying to address with the application, make sure there's a place for everything to be stored. The loading bay door at that location is going to be modified with a chute to the dumpster. So, it'll be all put and closed, there'll be a chute to the dumpster. And in addition to that, the elevation of that runoff is actually three feet lower than grade, because this area dips down toward the loading bay doors. So, there's actually a natural, it's naturally screened from view, being at a lower elevation at that garage bay door. All the dumpsters are currently picked up by a private hauler on a weekly basis, cardboard is baled and picked up by a private recycling hauler as needed every two weeks.
Brent, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there an existing fence along the property line, and if so, will that fence remain after the improvements installed?
Yes, there are, the entire property is encompassed by an existing chain link fence, 7-foot here at the back, I think it's pretty much 6-foot here on the side, so the height varies, but there's an existing chain link fence around the entire property. There's also a chain link fence that basically encloses the horseshoe-shaped area and blocks it off for security purposes.
So, a student?
The barbed wire.
The barbed wire is going to be removed, as part of the application, the fence will remain. So, anyone, a student at one of the schools, or someone at the park couldn't wander onto this property and get into the stormwater facility or something?
No, everything's enclosed within the fence.
Right.
I'd like to go through some of the variance, the variance, I should say, and waivers that the applicant is requesting. The applicant's requesting the following variance and waivers. There are two existing non-conforming bulk variances, as follows, a front yard setback, where a minimum of 50-foot is required, and 34.9 feet exists right here. This is where that front yard setback existing nonconformity is. He's also, there's also an existing nonconforming side yard setback, where 25 feet is required, and 10 feet exists, right here on the north side of this corner, this is an existing building, existing nonconformity. You can see how the new addition was pulled over, so that it's not approaching, not bringing any variance on that side, it's bringing it more over toward this chemical plant, farther away from the school. There's one new variance requested, building coverage, where a maximum of 35 percent is required, and 49.1 percent is proposed. In support of that, we're proposing the stormwater management detention basin to mitigate that increase. So, like I testified before, we're going to have an outlet control, we're going to cut back the flows for the 2, 10, and 100, and we're going to make sure that there's no negative impact as a result of that increase. Based on the, oh, there's one new variance I just mentioned, I skipped in here. Based on this being an industrial use, and we're proposing a 10-foot landscape buffer along the entire property frontage, and we have the 15 shade trees along the back, we're asking the board to consider a few waivers with regard to landscaping. The parking lot landscaping, where a minimum of 10 percent is required for lots over 11 spaces, and a minimum of one shade tree per space, this is an industrial use, we're making an effort to landscape the areas where the park is and the school is and the frontage. We're asking for some leniency on that. Landscaped parking lot islands, foundation planting where shrubs 2-foot high, 3-foot on center on all sides of the building would be required, and buffering and screening on the west side, again, that's where there's a chemical treatment plant, and on that side, the treatment plant has a similar loading area to what we're proposing, so we're asking for some leniency on screening that one side. Another waiver we're requesting is a traffic impact study, or statement, we have provided a trip generation report to the board for review, that it was concluded that the number of the anticipated trips will increase based on increased size of the existing warehouse building. However, it's presumed that the surrounding roadway network can accommodate the traffic generated from the site, since the location is within the industrial zone, which is existent, and it's adjacent to Jersey Avenue State Highway Route 91, which is just down the street from Jersey Avenue, right here at the intersection. Additionally, the applicant does not intend to expand their current operations as a result of the project, therefore, no increase in employees or deliveries are anticipated. That's the balance of the waivers, and I'd like to just go through engineering and planning review comments, if you would, I can address them all, or we can just say for the record that we will comply with all of the comments by the board's professionals letters.
Just to, you know, the diversity of mine, we need cleanup for environmental, there was some environmental cleanup.
The applicant's.
Yeah, the owner can actually address that now, if you want to swear him in, we can address that, and there's a comment about security tips.
Can you address all my other comments?
Okay.
Stand up. Can you raise your right hand, state your names, tell your last name, please?
Steven Resnick, R E S, I C K.
And you swear the whole, tell the whole truth in this matter?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Resnick, if you could just first address the ongoing environmental remediation at the site, and then we'll get into the security measures.
So, there's two different environmental companies responsible. So, we're responsible for one environmental issue, related to a tenant that left some oil barrels residue, so that's a D E P case, it's being remedied, we have an L S R P assigned to it, it's moving through its course. Then, a previous owner, General Cable, which is a public company, they're responsible for the remaining cases on the property. There's, the main one in reference to this case is the railroad tracks going through, where, goes right through where the building's going, so that's in the process of being remedied also, so, and then there's, over the years, General Cable's done many, many, a few other environmental cleanups that all have no further action letters on, so it's pretty much a work in progress, but we're planning on it being done, I think, at some point this year, in reference to where the building's going to go.
Yeah, the other question was about security, I think you have some security cameras at the.
Yeah, so the building currently now has a full security system. I guess it's a UL rated security system, we have high valuables in the building now, we plan on putting the same security system in the new addition. The building also has a full closed circuit camera system that'll be expanded into the interior exterior of the addition. The building also has a remote sensor camera alarm system too, in addition to the regular alarm system, in certain parts of the building where the high valuable items are stored. That's pretty much covered the security.
That covers those comments?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. So, the engineer has completed his testimony, if the board has any questions.
I know that you've mentioned it a couple times, with the D E P career, there is no negative impact to the park?
Correct.
Okay, and then you mentioned your traffic study, how does that impact the drop off and the pickup times for the school?
There's really, the deliveries that the owner, the applicant's proposing won't change, he's actually going to be following the same schedule. The purpose of the building is just to give him more remote space inside, so he can basically have more space to maneuver around and utilize for storage. So, I mean, he can get into that, I think you plan on talking about that a little bit, but his schedule doesn't intend to change, so there shouldn't be any impact to what's happening at the school.
Sure, yeah, if you want to address that.
So, right now, we're, our trucks mostly leave at 5:00 in the morning, way before the school gets in, and then they're back, probably most likely before the school gets out, you know, so there's very little overlap, and occasionally that might happen, but very little overlap, especially in the morning, there's zero, because the trucks are all gone by the time the school's in session.
And this area will allow him more room for the trucks to park and wait, or, you know, store, you know, do what they have to do for deliveries, and not have to rush and exit. There may be more time for them to wait for when the school does dismiss, and then leave when it's less congested. Right now, it's very tight, because everything he's doing is inside this one area.
So, it makes the operations more efficient?
Correct. That was the intention of moving the building over and making that area.
Okay, great, I'll have my next witness come in. About Joseph Hyland, the architect.
Can you raise your right hand, state your names, tell your last name, please?
Yes, Joseph Hyland, H Y L A N D.
And you swear the whole truth in this matter?
Yes, I did.
If you could briefly give your qualifications to the board, have you testified before this ward before?
I have testified here, I wasn't, not sure if it's the planning or the zoning board here in New Brunswick.
Yeah, he has been before this ward, Mr. Triv, I just ask, since the last time that
you were here, which I believe was several years ago?
Yes.
Have your credentials changed any way?
No, they have not.
Can you just, the way your testimony, board?
So, I have here is a bird's eye image of the existing structure and the proposed massing pile here in the rear of the. massing pile here in the rear of the addition.
So, is that A3?
So, as Brent already mentioned, the project is, is the construction of a warehouse addition to an existing structure. So, this is the new part, and this is the existing. The addition is 57,586 square feet, and the existing building is 89,605, for a total building area of 147,191 square feet. My numbers differ slightly from the engineer's, as the measurable floor area for an architect is taken from the inside of the exterior walls, and the engineer takes it from the outside walls. The existing structure is composed of four separate one-story structures. The, the first structure to the northwest is a, is a masonry, is a masonry structure, and there's offices in the front, totaling 6973 square feet, and there's a 28,349-square-foot warehouse to the rear, that's here, the offices are here, Van Dyke is, is here. The second structure is also masonry, that's this structure here. It is a warehouse and has an existing loading dock, which is in this courtyard right here. The third structure to the southeast is a pre-engineered metal building, that's this building, it has solar panels on the roof. The fourth structure in the rear is also a metal building, but that will be removed for the construction of the addition. This is the key map of the entire building, and the floor plan, the new warehouse, the larger scale drawing is here. This is all existing down here, the new loading dock, the seven spaces are to the right, the existing loading dock is, is here. So, the, the new structure will be an L shape, it will have the seven loading docks for the semi-trucks. The structure will be engineered by Butler Building Systems, will have a wide-span rigid frame with column bays at 25 feet on center. The open plan will allow for three-level rack heights and product load track systems for picking of the, of the product. The outs, the exterior elevations.
More to A4?
The exterior will be painted block to a height of eight feet to protect the structure from the forklifts, and structural metal wall panels and standing seam metal roof will be on the building. The colors will match closely the most recent work done on the buildings, to the rear of the buildings. The building will also be fully sprinkled. So, the front elevation, the existing structure was just in beige, the new is colored here, so the front, the right side, the trucks pull up here, it's a very shallow pitched capable roof, the rear of the building, the grid varies, there's emergency exits on the back, this is the side that faces the school, most of the structure is existing, and the addition is on the rear. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you raise your right hand, state your names, spell your last name, please?
Charles Heyd, last name spelled H.E.Y.D.T.
And you swear the whole truth in this matter?
I do.
Mr. Heyd, can you give your qualifications to the board, please?
This is my first time appearing before this board, I am a cert professional planner by the state board, professional planners in the state of New Jersey, I also hold my certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners, as well as a master's degree from Rutgers University Blasting School of Planning and Public Policy. I've appeared before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey on matters such as this, supporting variances of this nature, as well as other towns in Millsix County, Woodbridge, and, and other surrounding communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we worked pretty thorough with two prior testimonies, I'll be brief and to the point. With respect to the one variant being requested for maximum building coverage, where we exceed the requirement, the permit of 35%, really, it's wearing that the, let me first say, with an existing building on the site, there are some physical challenges into meeting coverage. We're working around an existing building to provide sufficient internal space to meet the needs of the future tenant or tenant. With that, in that sense, it does meet the C1 criteria in terms of the physical hardship. However, I think there's much more support in the fact that there are added benefits of the project, of the application as a whole, which I'll cover, that outweigh any associated detriments. Many of these benefits were covered, there's ample landscaping, I'll refer to the site plan, there's ample landscaping along the perimeter of, of the rear, along the park and, and the school, as well as street landscaping at the request of the board engineer and prof, and planner, which we comply with. And in, in large part, there's also a stormwater detention system being proposed, which will improve current conditions and handle the added capacity of the additional building mass and, and coverage on the site. So, given those improvements, they do outweigh any of the detriments. I will also say generally, this project fulfills the purposes of the city's master plan and reexamination to support the expansion and preservation of industrial uses, being that this is the I2 general industrial zone, it is a permitted use, and projects such as these help maintain the vitality of these uses in this area, as well as, there are just general improvements to the aesthetics along the street frontage. It also supports the municipal land use law, in the sense that an approval would be a public action guiding appropriate development in the state of New Jersey, as well as providing sufficient space for industrial uses in an appropriate manner. When I refer to the negative criteria, there's really two prongs, if you're familiar with them, the first being no substantial detriment to the public good. With respect to that, we covered many of them already, the improved stormwater landscaping, onsite circulation, all are incorporated within this redesign of the site, as well as security issues, where we're removing barbed wire, which is a hazard, and we're being compliant with the zoning, but also the site fencing around curvers will still remain intact, as well as lighting, security lighting, and site cameras for added security. So, that, that all is in place, and I will also note that there is an improved recycling plan for the facility now, much of the outdoor storage areas and refuse areas will be enclosed in an organized manner as per the TAC meeting recommendations. The second prong of the negative criteria relates to substantial detriment to the zone plan, it, it's very straightforward, this is a permitted use in the I2 zone. As it relates to adjacent uses, let me just quickly address them. Along the, I'll refer to the aerial marked as A3, along the northwestern property boundary, there is a drive access that separates the facility and the school and water tower, but this facility does use that drive access to access some of the parking spaces, so it is shared in that nature. The driveway is actually used for some parking for the park, which will still remain, and buses use this to drop off and pick up in the rear of the school. It's not the main entrance for the school, so much of the vehicles won't be entering here on, on a daily basis. So, in, in, in large part, there's really no, other than these 11 parking spaces, there's no use of this driveway from the facility. So, it's, it's actually a very compatible property line along this, this edge. To the rear is the park and the ball fields, there's going to be proposed, or there's an existing fence that will remain that will separate the two uses, so there's no substantial impact to that use. And again, as, as was mentioned before, to the east or southeast is an existing chemical plant that has been in existence and operation. Immediately adjacent on their facility are outdoor loading, loading areas and external tanks, which we're requesting the design with offering along that property, which is understandable given that our proposing loading zone is, is more or less a back-of-house operation, just as the adjacent property is a back-of-house operation. With that, we also are proposing screening at the frontage along Van Dyke Avenue. I think that covers, just looking.
Is there any impact on the properties across the street, across Van Dyke Avenue?
In, in my opinion, no, it's covered that there are speed bumps in the road, it's a 25 mile per hour road, I mean, that, that's pretty straightforward in terms of traffic, and that's really would be the only impact. The proposed addition is in the rear, and we're screening the majority of the building with vegetation, so from a visual or any other impact that, that is, comes from this proposed project, there really is no substantial impact across the street. That would conclude my direct testimony, be happy to answer any questions or any comments.
I need to test on my comments, I'm satisfied, the plans were updated before we got here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that, that concludes our testimony, so thank you for your attention. Somebody here. I'm sorry, Charlie, that, I didn't mean that.
The board seeks to make positive recommendations, complies in terms of DNR engineering report dated January 8th, means all necessary easements entered cross estimate, access agreements reviewed and approved by the board attorney and city engineer, payment of site performance bond amount to be determined approved by the city engineer, city of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees amount to be calculated pursuant to Title 1624160, paying a whole water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 1304 and 1308, issuance of a road opening permit, city engineer required, compliance in terms of the Big Knoll Consulting Report dated January 4th, planning review escrow fund for anticipated approval reviews, payment of any other fees due to city and Brunswick related to development or use of the site, payment of outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, Millsix County Planning Board approval, DNR Canal Commission approval, waiver, field soil conservation district approval, waiver, any other outside agency approvals that are necessary, submit engineering site plan, comply with any changes required by planning or engineering memos or plan them, it's offered at the hearing, submit architectural plans to comply with changes required by planning and engineering memos or plan them, it's offered at the hearing, and removal of the barbed wire fencing, all these are the site moves maintained by the applicants, all expense, all onsite utilities to construct underground, all temporary encroachments in the public driveway, shall we acquire city council approval, all construction studies shall be done onsite, less encroachment allowing board into the public driveways, approved by city council, streets should be kept clean to sediment and debris, applicants shall cause streets to be cleaned directly to be used by the Director of Public Works, track and patch installed along construction exits, replacement of damp streets, curved sidewalks, as per direction of the city engineer.
Make a motion for a group to believe the convincing step by the senior.
Here, Jacob?
Yes.
Dale Rivers?
Yes.
Larry Barber?
Yes.
Negative?
Yes.
Jeff?
Any other matters of interest to the public?
Evening members of the board, very briefly, just wanted to let everybody know who didn't hear at the last time, that I've been spending the past couple months researching the bus systems that serve New Brunswick, and trying to come up with some recommendations for how they can be improved, and I was supposed to present at the Traffic Commission on January 4th, but of course, we had a huge snowstorm, it was canceled, so you have a second chance to attend, and as community leaders, I hope some of you could come out and check it out if you're free during the day on February the 1st at 1:30 PM in this room, it's a public meeting, so anybody's welcome, and, and I'll be making my presentation then, and I hope that some of you can join us, thank you.
Thank you.
See no one else?